Well, good afternoon to all of you tuning in to another episode of Sports Talk seven five seven. Sports or everything to do with sports in our region. Produced by the Sports Commission, Hampton Roads Sports Commission, the Hampton Roads Chamber sponsored by Optum Health, CHKD Sports Medicine, Atlantic Bay Mortgage, Town Bank and Pepsi. Just a show that we've put together as Aaron and I spoke about. To be creative and stay relevant and continue to to carry out our mission in the region. Even during this time of COVID, even during this time of virtual connection. Sports Talk seven five seven has allowed this sports commission's mission and the chamber's mission to move forward as we study. These great sports personalities in our region and their their effect on sports and its economic impact as well. So today we have with us. Navy City Councilman Aaron Rouse, former NFL star, First Colonial star, Virginia's tech star, Green Bay Packers. And you know, and so forth and so on. Aaron, we just appreciate your time and out of your busy schedule, you said you had a number of zooms already. But yet he lends himself to another zoom. Good afternoon to you.
Thank you, Claudell, for for having me and for that prestigious introduction, man. I appreciate that so much, but I'm glad to be here and thanks for having me on.
Not a problem. The the Sports Commission and the Hampton Roads Chamber tremendous amount of respect for you. And we do appreciate this. Just just kind of getting started, you know, obviously a sports figure and we see football, but you know, what what other sports did you play? Virginia Beach native, I should add, but what other sports did you play growing up? You look like you had a mean fastball maybe or a basketball guy, but you know, outside of football, what else did you play?
Well, Claudell, I am originally from Norfolk, Virginia. I grew up young Spock Young Terrace, the St. Paul quadrant there. Before I moved to Virginia Beach, but I started off playing football with the Clovers. But I played all sports, clovers, football, played with the Cook Rams and and Virginia Beach basketball. Tried to play a little bit of baseball, but as you know, a lot of times in our in our community, we didn't have that type of space to play. Baseball or the the tools that we needed to play, so it was football, baseball. We also had a in in Norfolk, we also had this game where we were running around and jumped a little chain link fences. And if if you couldn't hurt over chain link fence, then you couldn't you couldn't keep up with us for the rest of the day. So that's how guys learned to jump so high and run so fast. We used to have bike races all the time and I had a beach cruiser. And so you can imagine trying to keep up with the Pee Wee Herman beach cruiser, some of my other friends had the little little trick bikes, you know. But I can say it paid off for me in the end.
Understood, understood. So when when did you make the transition to Virginia Beach? And you know, how did that kick off your kind of stardom there at First Colonial that that lets us some great things?
Yeah, so possibly around fifth grade year, I I moved from Norfolk to Virginia Beach. I attended Burton Elementary School for a year by way of Lynn Haven Middle School and then First Colonial High School. And so, you know, for me, it was just about being being active, not getting caught up in the street life. Really trying to make sure I graduate from high school, something that my mother made sure to to really drive home to me and and my grandfather as well. You know, he said, you keep God first, you work for everything that you want in life and your word is your bond. And so from those values that they instilled in me, I just tried to stay busy. And so sports wasn't the only thing I did in in high school. I had a part time job working at the Virginia Beach Bus School Garage. Washing buses, picking out gum throughout the summer. I shadowed the custodial staff throughout the summers as well, worked at Farm Fresh, Food Lion. All while trying to play sports. And so for me, it just comes from that great work ethic that my my grandfather and my mom is still with me.
So was Virginia Tech your first choice or you know, had it had that come about? And obviously that led to some great things, but how'd you land at Tech?
So it's that's interesting story. I, you know, going to college wasn't even a thought for myself and my family. The biggest thing was to graduate from high school, you know, graduating from high school. That that was the, you know, the the tier, so to speak. That's what the the bar was set for for us. And so it it just so happened, God blessed me with football talents. I'm I'm sitting in First Colonial High School class one day and Frank Beamer, the legendary Hall of Famer. College Hall of Famer Frank Beamer walks down the hall with Brian Stein spring. And and from there, the rest is history, you know, they they offered me a full scholarship. My junior year in high school and and they were coming off that championship run in ninety nine with Magical Michael Vick. Ryan Yow Whitaker also who who's from Norfolk, Virginia. You know, guys that who who I could relate to. You know, Andre Davis, I mean, they they had this whole squad who 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 were who are coming off this championship run. And you're watching them on national TV. And so to get a full scholarship two years later, it meant a lot to me. I recall taking it home to my mother and I said, Mom, you know, I just got out for the full full ride to Virginia Tech. And my mom was like, what? You know, what Virginia Tech? And I was like, Mom, you know, you know, Frank Beamer, you know, national championship coach. And she goes, I'm not too familiar with that. I said, Mom, Michael Vick, you know, the school, she's like, oh, okay. I I know who that is. It's like I'm going to the same school. And so from that one point on, it was it came about education. My mom, she was happy that I played sports because it kept me busy, taught me discipline, it taught me how to work with others, how to communicate teamwork. And the sub differences, but the the most important thing was the education. She knew that I would get a a great education from Virginia Tech. So there we are.
Yeah, so certainly, you know, some success there, obviously. Their coaching staff, offense and defense, Frank being around the special teams at that time, Bud Foster. But, you know, it turned into an NFL career, you know, so draft pick, free Asian, or how did that come about? And you know, what were some of the highlights from that part of your of your life and career?
Yeah, so I think, you know, initially going to Virginia Tech, I didn't lift any weights in high school. I was probably a hundred and eighty pounds tall, lanky kid. And I get to Virginia Tech and our strength and conditioning coach, Mike Gentry. He's a he's a man who's passionate about his craft. He we lifted every single day and then I and I got up to about two hundred and twenty pounds my freshman year. And so when I came home, my mother just looked at me and said, who are you? What are they doing to you up there? And so having the chance to play under Bud Foster, you talk about a defensive genius here. This guy could have coached on in the NFL if he wanted to, or he could have been head coach anywhere. But he remained at at Virginia Tech under Frank Beamer's tenure. And that says a lot about the type of coach Frank Beamer was about the coaching staff that they had to be able to remain together for so long. And so by the time it came for me to enter the NFL draft, I was all set and ready, right? I I initially played outside linebacker. I remember talking to Frank Frank Beamer and I said, listen, coach, I need an opportunity to play safety. I know I can play. I know I'm tall. I know I'm big, right? But I can move. You've seen what I can do. Just give me a shot. Coach Beamer gave me my shot and and the rest is history. I was drafted by the Green Bay Packers in the third round of two thousand seven NFL draft.
That's tremendous, man. And you know, certainly you remember some of those games and attributes and you know, things, things that you did. You know, kind of fast forward from that. You know, Black History Month and there's some history that you made. You know, being youngest African American elected to the city council in the city of Virginia Beach. You know, between that football career and the political career, which we'll talk about, congratulations to you again. You know, how did you position yourself and how did you prepare yourself? And and what gave you the inspiration to take such a huge leap in the politics?
Yes, that's a really great question, Claudell. I I think initially you just got to keep an open mind. And and I always like to go back to Nikki Giovanni. I was so fortunate enough to have her class and have her as a professor at Virginia Tech. She really helped broaden my horizon and thinking that you are more than just an athlete. You know, you you do more than just entertain. You have, you know, a beautiful mind. You are someone you can do more to contribute to some to society. And so for me, jumping into politics, it wasn't something that I planned to do. And it wasn't, I didn't even see it in my my future. It came about by ways of I got into a bad car accident when I was playing for the Arizona Cardinals and I couldn't play football anymore. I came home and and played Marty Schothammer and and I want to send my my well wishes to Marty Schothammer. I hope he he gets well soon. Marty asked me, did I want to play for the Virginia Destroyers here? And I thought, well, yeah, it'd be a great way to show that I still can play. I'm healthy enough. I can play in the NFL. Well, well, that didn't work out or pan out as I wanted to after winning Marty Schothammer's first professional championship for him. And being a most valuable player during a championship game. I got a phone call from my godfather, James Church, who I'm I'm sure the you and the chamber is familiar with James Church. And so he said, come to Richmond with me. We're going to go to Richmond. And I I want you to come with me. You're going to meet a lot of important people up here. We're going to have a good time. My initial thought was, I don't want to go to Richmond, you know. I don't want to go on the hill, you know, to generate a family. I mean, you know, just a bunch of talking going on, like I I don't, you know, I want to do it. And and James said, no, you're going to learn a lot. And so I said, okay, I'll come, but you owe me dinner, a a big dinner. And so I go to Richmond and Claudell, he was right. The things that I I've I've learned about the resources and how it was managed and how the government throughout our state. And why this is so important to to our communities and particularly those those communities who need more resources, who need more more of a focus. I I learned so much that that by the time my day was over in Richmond, all I had was another opportunity to come back. I didn't have a a official job. I didn't have a no kind of title, nothing was promised. It was just an open invitation, Aaron, to come back and and learn more about what we do. And so for three years, I took advantage of that that invitation. And I learned from men and women up in Richmond on both sides of the aisle. I learned the importance of committees, boards and committees. I learned the importance of legislation, how to really work with others who you may not see eye to eye on, but you know how to compromise. Make sure that 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 the team wins, getting back to that that sports analogy there, that the team wins, that Virginia wins. And so that's how I made that leap into into politics. I said, hey, this, this is not that much different from football. Because you have to be able to work with those who have different perspectives, who see things differently. But you have to work together in order understanding that it's about the teams, about the team, making sure that you can win, that Virginia's win, that. City of Virginia Beach citizens win in our region win. And so that's when I decided to to run for local council. I think you asked me about what it meant to be ultimately ultimately elected here. I mean, it was a it's a great accomplishment. It's a great accomplishment, but I don't hang my hat on that. What I'm most proud of is that so many more from our community and and friends that I grew up with and maybe didn't have a father in the home and grew up in a single parent house home or disadvantaged. That they can see someone from their community who can come come about and help make a change. Who just did, who just didn't rely on his athletic ability to to make a difference, but also wanted to make a difference legislatively.
Well, you talked about, you know, James Church and a person we all know and respect, Chamber and personally. But just given that opportunity and open that door for you. And so many times we talked earlier in sports, people not having opportunities to maybe play baseball or other sports. You know, how neat was that and how great was that for him to give you that opportunity? And then I know you've done that for, you know, a number of other people and just kind of, you know, started something great. And a lot of times that's for our our young people, that's all we need is an opportunity or a door open, you know. So that that was a great way and a great story of you getting into that. So again, back to the football career, you know, how is competing and vying for that job and going through the rigors of football? You know, how's that prepared you for the rigors of, you know, being a councilman, answering the tough questions and your rigorous workday and work week and the things that you had to face?
Yes, that's a great question. I think I I even go back to my time at Virginia Tech, you know, it's all about preparation. I think a lot of times what the fans see is is the end product on Sundays and and Saturday mornings, right? But Monday throughout the week, that Monday through Friday, you are putting in that work, you are preparing, you are studying your playbook. You are studying the other team's tendencies, you are studying their plays, you are making adjustments on the on the fly. And then you actually go out there throughout the week and and work with those. Well, in this case, football, there there are no women in in football yet, but there are some coaches, congratulations to those coaches. But you work up with those those other men and say, hey, all right, we got to put this all together and work as one one unit out here to go win a football game. So you compare that to to politics is is listen. Again, I I really don't like the partisan politics of it all, because we are one team, whether that's American, whether that's just Virginians. We are, we are competing on a world stage here. And so here specifically in Virginia Beach, there just so happen to be eleven council members. So I'm used to playing with, I'm used to playing with the eleven, ten other members. And so, but everyone has a different passion, a different perspective. What you have to be able to do is be open minded and have some humility to see the differences and understand where you can work. Work at, where you agree at, and those areas where you disagree at, you have to chip away at it and find out, okay. Where's the compromise? Where's that balance? And that's something football has has taught me throughout my life.
Certainly. And then, you know, as as we know, you're victorious in that campaign, but you know, you couldn't do that on your own. So you know, if you want to share that or shout somebody out, you certainly can. But you know, what were the individuals or what was that team and and how did you guys come together to get that done?
Yeah, so I mean, there's, oh my goodness, I like to shout out the entire city of Virginia Beach. There there is, there are so many people who contributed to my success and even being elected. I mean, to my success as 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 a graduate, being the first in my family to graduate from college, graduate from high school. I mean, you go always back to those teachers and those community leaders in Virginia Beach and in Norfolk, Virginia. Who who took those that their time, something they can never get back and say, hey, I want to invest that in you, right? I'm going to help you get the cleats that you don't need. I'm going to maybe pick you up and drive you to practice. I'm going to spend extra time with you, helping you learn trigonometry, right? I'm going to spend this time tutoring you. Also, if you get out of line, I'm going to hold you accountable and make sure that that the smallest details, you are accountable for that. You're accountable for your actions. And so when I think about the success we had on the campaign, really, I have to give that to the people along the way throughout my life who prepared me for this. My life experience that prepared me for the pressures of being in elected office. And again, playing on the highest levels of professional sports, you're used to being under a microscope. So that wasn't something I had to get used to all over again, you know. It it was, it was something that became a way of life for me, starting when I stepped foot on campus at Virginia Tech. So if I had to, I don't want to get to naming anyone specifically, but I want to name my my entire community. I mean, from even the teachers, the law enforcement officers who are under so much pressure today. I mean, they had a huge hand in in changing my perspective on what it is to actually be a law enforcement officer and serving our community. You talk about the teachers who don't get paid enough, who don't get paid enough, who spend their own dollars to for to give supplies and help students out. Even their their emotional, that they're emotional that they have to lend and to care for their students. And to be able to want to stay after school or come early or to tutor. You talk about, again, the coaches who who were like father figures along the way to me. When I got out of line for for being this this young, this young guy who who thought he was the best athlete in the world, right? You can't tell him anything. Those coaches who who humbled me and kept me humble, who through semester sprints my way to. Right, right. They keep me grounded. So this this community, the 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 men, I should say, the the boys and girls who I went to school with at First Colonial High School. You know, the the understanding that I may have come from Frenchy Village. And majority of the students that went to First Royal High School come from affluent neighborhoods. But yet the way we communicated and we we interacted, it was, it it was, there was no really no animosity towards each other. So that that comes from the upbringing, man, of 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 being able to have such a diverse upbringing. And and to understand that it wasn't me that 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 earned this success. It was a a success and it was a a long investment from a community to help me get here.
Absolutely. Time well spent by those persons, I should say.
Most definitely. I know, I know somebody who's thinking of having it back.
But I I have to say, you know, a tremendous story, some of which I I knew about and and getting enlightened as our as are our listeners as we speak. You know, I also have to ask, you know, people think about council meetings or the the things that they see on TV. But there's a lot of other things that go, a lot of elements or components that go into the day of a city councilman or municipal politician. Think us through, you know, what what does the day in the life of a city councilman look like? And then what are some of the demands that you have on you to serve our great city?
Yeah, so here in local politics, right? Local politics affects our our constituents directly. And and we're we're closest to our constituents. So here, being in the the largest populated city in the state of Virginia with over four, serving over four hundred and fifty seven thousand citizens in the city of Virginia Beach. From I live, I I have to get up at four AM to make it to the gym by five. And then once I get out about seven AM, it's corresponding, it's it's understanding what's on that agenda. It's it's returning those emails and those concerns and those issues that constituents may have. And that's a never ending process and understanding, we don't have a staff. I I don't, I don't, we don't, we don't have a staff where, you know, they can answer those calls or those missed calls or even those emails. And so it's it's corresponding throughout throughout the day. But also it's about finding those resources our community needs, you know, needs. They're so important, you know, our business community, you talk about, you know, our 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 elderly community, you talk about our youth. You talk about our our community who are trying to find ways to to mitigate these flooding concerns. You talk about, you know, transportation concerns and you talking about really providing. Or or at least improving the workforce that's going to sustain Virginia Beach in our region going forward. And so making that investment in K through twelve education. So the life of a councilman here in the city, the city of Virginia Beach is is the schedule is full, is quite full. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you this, Claudell, I enjoy it every single day. It's the reason why, you know, after studying and learning three years up at the state, the state level, I wanted to run for local politics. Because I understand how important it is here. And I wanted to make a difference here in my community, you know, it's given me so much before taking that leap and going on to a higher office. So it's a lot, man, but listen, too, much is given, much is, much is, you know, oh, how how the term, how the term, I'll probably mess that up. But possibility to come with it.
Absolutely. And not 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 to mention the blitz that's come at us with, in no pun intended, the blitz of COVID nineteen. To make that day even tougher. So I can only imagine the additional correspondence and additional challenges and additional meetings and additional time spent to navigate through that. You know, we'll go away from that and come back to it. We also know that you were very involved with the Something in the Water movement and the Something in the Water Festival. That's transformed our region and transformed Virginia Beach in a positive manner. You know, if you could and if you're willing to, tell us a little bit more about that. And you know, how how, since we're going to have to live with this thing for a while, how how COVID is going to shape that moving forward?
Yeah, man, there's Something in the Water Festival, you know, first of all, I want to give all the thanks to Pharrell Williams for even having this this really bright idea that they want to make sure his hometown, Virginia Beach, has something special. And really came about solving a major issue of of College Beach Weekend. Typically, College Beach Weekend, those students come down and have nothing to do. And and I'm sure we all are familiar with the history of College Beach Weekend. And so to have, you know, this this world icon like Pharrell Williams say, step in and say, hey, I I want to make sure that I bring a festival here to Virginia Beach that's not solely music, music musically based. But is one that that celebrates the arts, something that celebrates the the math, the science, that celebrates the business, the athletes, the the entrepreneurs. I mean, that that celebrates all that Virginia and Virginia Beach has to offer. And so to be the only council liaison to this festival, it was an honor and privileged. But it wasn't without his his work. And and I think that's that's something we all understood, you know. Again, I think when you you have something like this and you try to go out to a community and you want their buy in. For me, the only way to get their buy is to be honest, be straightforward about what we are trying to accomplish. And and there were a lot of apprehensive folks and legitimately apprehensive about the festival going forward. But I think this is where leadership is so important. Because I think leadership, you know, with the right leadership, you can say, listen, we're not going to let our past dictate or slow us down from our future. You know, we're going to do this the right way and with your help. And that's the only way it's going to be successful if we do this together. And so a a again, for me, being a part of this festival, it it was, it it was transforming, it is transforming, it's amazing. And now you have, unfortunately, we had to cancel it this last year because of the pandemic. It's going to be a challenge to to see how even that industry goes forward to to really mitigate those COVID concerns. You know, can you get people all in a clothes or or this case, it was on the beach. But can you get people all close together in proximity and and have a festival? I think that's something that they're still trying to work out, is something that remains to be seen. But I'm hopeful one day we 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 can solve that that issue.
Something that we all got a chance to experience and we saw the the masses moving in in coordination and moving in peace. To to, you know, bring this great festival together, got a chance to be a part of it myself, you know. So our hats are off to you and and your and your close friend Pharrell with that, you know, kind of sticking on sports. You know, we see that the Virginia Beach Sports Center has come online recently, something that I know is near and dear to you as well. You know, so with Virginia Beach adding yet another festival or yet another facility, excuse me, to its arsenal. You know, how do you see these positions, the city's positioning as it relates to sports and its ability to to bring in sports and host sporting events in the region?
Yeah, I thought it was, I think the city is, it was a smart move by the city to understand that. Sports is a multi billion dollar industry, right? And we're just trying to tap into that, to that industry. So we continue the great services we have to run our our city and we can provide the services that that we have to our our constituents here. But but again, I I'm so excited for the sports class to open. And and I want to give a major shout out to Norfolk State University, behold the grand and bold. You know, they're they're going to host the the be the first to host the national track championships here. And and that's, that is important on so many levels. Number one, because it's a be the first HBCU to host a a national track championship here. And we're going to have that here in the city of Virginia Beach. And and that's something that's that's going to.
Or history.
That's that's history and that's and that's amazing. That's amazing. But I think also it's it's important to understand that, you know, again, with you having a a billion dollar industry like this, you have to have those that support around it to support this industry. You have to have those amenities, so to speak. And so, you know, Virginia Beach, we have a proud tourism economy here. And so that is only going to help support, the sports industry is only going to help support our tourism economy. You know, you talk about hotel stage, you talk about meal billing tax stage, you talk about admissions tax. You talk about putting Virginia Beach, again, on the map for something others and just our fine beaches, right? And and pristine waterways. So again, we want to be known also for having great sports venues. And that's that's all the sports, sports, that's soccer, that's wrestling, that's field hockey, that's basketball, that's track. You name it, we want to host you here in the city of Virginia Beach, but we want to be welcoming. You know, we we just don't want to have the the brick and mortar set up and you getting people, just invite people in. We want to be welcoming, we want to be encouraging more of a diverse community from a sports perspective as well to come to the city of Virginia Beach where we're all is welcome, where where we celebrate something in the water, right? And so that is something that we we continuously have our challenge cut out for us to make sure we understand how we we are more inclusive, we are inviting. And that means having those tough discussions that are centered around social issues that a lot of times make people uncomfortable. But if we are ever to solve those issues, the conversation we must have.
Absolutely. So you know, we're we're talking on the million dollar level in the Virginia Beach Sports Center now for the billion dollar question. You know, can Virginia Beach or can this region sustain a Major League Sports team, MLB, NHL, NFL? You know, can we do that?
I believe so. I I I believe so, and I may be a little biased, right? So that's that's part of me talking, but from a council side talking, I believe so. I think, listen, we have this great region here in in Hampton Roads or the seven five seven, as I like to call it, and so many others. We have this great region here and once we start. We have this great region here. And once we start working together, there's no telling what we cannot accomplish. And there's the thing, the important thing to understand and realize is that there are other regions out here who are competing, who are, who are, we are competing against to to attract a workforce, to attract may maybe a major league sports team, um to make sure um they are on the the front edge of of innovation. And that's something we have our work cut out for. So yes, I believe we can. I think it's going to take some type of revenue sharing formula um to 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 really uh bring in all our seven cities. And and that includes Williamsburg. A lot of the time, people leave out Williamsburg, but Williamsburg, I won't leave you out there. Um, and even making sure that our our corridor, our our innovation quarter that goes all the way up to Richmond, um make sure that they're included also. And so I I believe our region can be can can be very, very special. And and so, yes, whether that's basketball, football, I know we have the talent here. Uh, I mean, you you're a real home of some of the the greatest athletes that ever played the game here. I know we have the talent here and I know we have the fans, we have the passion. And so people talk about you know, one of the 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 concern is is we have this kind of um of population who who who's not always here. Well, we have the world's largest um naval base here. And so what I see, I I I see that as opportunity. I see that as a way um you bring them when they're stationed here, our military, um our fine men and women who serve in our military, while they're here, um less impression them, less less, less, let's get them uh all excited about a major sports team here. And once they get stationed somewhere else, they take that assignment somewhere else, but they'd be, they're lifelong fans of Hampton Rose and seven five seven. And so I believe we can get that done.
As Councilman Rouse speaking on regionalism, folks. But uh, you know, as we move forward and switch gears, um and and certainly a proponent of the uh, you know, sports team myself, as as we switch gears, we also know that you do a lot in the community. And um, you know, that those those persons have helped uh you and I, uh speaking about you today, uh you know, get to where we are. Um, but you've you've created this uh foundation, this initiative, Rouse's House. Tell us a little bit more about that and uh what you're kind of doing there and your goals there and and how even people can get involved.
Thank you so much uh for that question. You know, Rouse's House is is my nonprofit. I I initially started, it it wasn't a nonprofit when I started out, I just started out by just giving back to a community. Again, like I said, that that has given me so much. Um, you know, I went around to to local um small businesses at the oceanfront and and I was like, hey, I'm gonna do a bookbag giveaway. If you want to put supplies in the bag, you can collect them. Will meet me here on Saturday and uh we'll we'll get those out to the to the community. And so um for for a number of years, I say about two years, um businesses and local community leaders should say, hey, you know, Aaron, I want to contribute. I I got these bags of supplies I want to be able to give back. And so it it comes back to this 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 thinking and thought process, that education is the real key, right? For those young athletes who think that somehow my athletic ability was the the sole reason why I I found success, they would be mistaken. You know, it it came back to the educational piece, the the learning, that the hours you put, you put in with your 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 tutors. Um, the 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 self uh responsibility and discipline it takes to 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 do your homework, right? Um, on your own, without someone telling you this. And so for me, I I wanted to the first Rouse's House uh back to school giveaway, um it was for our for the youth. But I didn't want to invite my my celebrity friends. I didn't want to invite my celebrity friends to come out um and really impression on these young people because I thought they needed to see business leaders. They needed to see our community leaders, the 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 firemen, the policemen out there. They need to see our teachers, our small business owners, our entrepreneurs, so they can understand what success looks like. I've I know Instagram and Twitter and social media is so prevalent today and 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 all you see is 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 the athletes get all the praise, right? Um, and celebrities get all the praise, but the real heroes are are those teachers, those firemen, those policemen who, those community leaders who keep our community going and thriving. And so I wanted them to see that. And so that's what Rouse's House strives to do every single year. Um, we try to throughout, whether it's back to school or Christmas or around Thanksgiving, this past year, we gave away over almost two hundred turkeys, I want to say, um and and meal kits to to families who need it, especially throughout this COVID time. Um, we not only give supplies to our students, but we support our teachers um as well. And every single year, we invite um our law enforcement officers to come out because coming from the black community and Claudio, you know this all too well, we will need to improve and build those relationships with our law enforcement officers. And so I thought this is a great way, and I'll continue to think it is a great way to build those relationships with our law enforcement officers thus between them and our minority and black communities. And so again, Rouse's House, uh it would not be possible without, you know, the 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 donations from just um those those people who are out there who who want to support. And um you can find Rouse's House uh on Instagram. Um, Rouse's House, there's a link um in the bio as well, or if you want to go to paypal dot com um and search Rouse's House, there's also a way to donate. And one thing we're proud of here, and I have to give a major, major shout out to Jalen. Jalen Brown, I can tell you right now, Rouse's House would not be what it is without her. She does so much um for nonprofits. She she is amazing. She is awesome. Um, and and so I just want to make sure um that 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 she gets her just due um as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we we certainly salute your efforts there in the community, in the nonprofit world and and uh directly affecting our youth. Uh, and we we just can't have enough of that. And we will certainly um think of and and come up with more ways to support you in that. You know, a- as as we all know, we could come on and on about these questions about sports economic impact. Uh, you know, your day to day life, um, you know, the city of Virginia Beach. But you know, we do have to come to a close, but we got some really good Q and A. And a number of them kind of go into my last question, which is, which is about academic success. And uh, you know, we'll we'll go to our Q and A here. Uh, you know, what lessons did you learn in sports and and how have they helped you advance yourself professionally after your football career? And uh, what advice would you give to young student athletes? That was my question. And that's a a question from the Q and A. And uh, you know, we just want to hear a little bit more about the advice that you would give to up and coming young student athletes, uh professional athletes and uh aspiring politicians.
Yeah. So I I would say um your reputation is something that's very, very important. Your your name is is very, very important. Um, is is something that take years and years to build up, but only seconds to destroy. Um, and so I would say, especially for the youth today, be mindful of social media. You know, even I sometimes before I go to tweet something, I read over it, not to delete it. Because things can be taken so much out of context, but also you have to have a more of a responsibility before you put things um on the internet. And one of the things I'm most proud of is is having a sense of class. And that's something I learned from from Coach B, you know. Whether you win or lose is how you win or lose and how you carry yourself, right? And that's something um that that carries me right now within in politics and has carried me through um through sports. And so it's not just about what you do on the field, it's how you carry yourself on off the field. Um, particularly, it's it's how not not how well you treat your teammates, but it's also how well you treat your classmates and people within your community. Um, it's it was, it's really the little things um that makes such a big difference. And so that would be my my piece of advice. What was your, what, did you have another part of that question?
No, you you hit it dead on. Uh, you know, we we certainly appreciate that. I know you preach that in your camps. Uh, you know, people are preaching that all over. And uh, we we just have to carry ourselves better as athletes, especially with so many distractions, especially so many outlets that can trip you up uh nowadays with technology and and social media. Our last one kind of goes back to business, back to politics. Our good friend Kirk Kraus, uh, you know, he says, how do you see the seven five seven coming together on collaborative efforts? And uh, you know, the Together at Last campaign, which we know about, uh, they were tremendous success for Norfolk, Virginia, Norfolk and Virginia Beach. You know, are are you a proponent of this? And uh, you know, how how do you plan to push this collaboration?
I am. I I'm I'm a big component of of working together throughout our region of regionalism. I think we have to do a better part of communicating what that means. I think a lot of times when people hear regionalism, somehow they think there, you're gonna lose a specific city like Virginia Beach and they lose this authority to another city. That's not what that means. You know, I interpret it, regionalism mean working together collaboratively to really uplift our entire region. And to make sure we can sustain um sustain the vitality of our our region going forward. And so I look forward to working with not only with Norfolk, but with Chesapeake, with Suffolk, um with with Newport News and Hampton, Portsmouth, Williamsburg again, uh all the way up to Richmond. I think we all have something um in this region that we can offer. Something specific and unique that we can offer. And if we combine um those those attributes, we could be, we are special, but we can be special together. And that's something I would always work forward to.
Good, a a great, this 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 conversation, a great mix of politics, a great mix of life lessons, sports, economic impact and uh most importantly, our region and and most specifically, Virginia Beach. Aaron, we just thank you this afternoon uh for your time. Uh, we thank our attendees for their questions and their participation. Um, you know, we we just wish you the best of luck in your community efforts, your political efforts. And uh, you know, as you help uh be a mentor uh to young men and women as as they come through the city and our region.
Thank you again for for having me, Claudio. Um, again, I I and I want to thank the Chamber as well and and this been Hampton Rose Sports Commission. Um, you guys do great work. Um, thank you so much for all your support. Anytime you want me back. Um, I'm I'm here to just say the word. And lastly, I'll leave you with a quote from JFK. He said, politics is a lot like football. If you see daylight, run through the hole.
What what better way to end it, man? We 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 appreciate this. You know, thanks to our participants out there. One more time about our sponsors, Optima Health, uh CHKD Sports Medicine, Atlantic Bay Mortgage, Town Bank, Pepsi, uh and the Chamber, our production partner, our municipal partner, City of Virginia Beach, City of Norfolk and City of Chesapeake. Uh, join us again when we come back February eighteenth, as we have Coach Latrell Scott from Norfolk State University as they kick off a spring football season, uh something new. Uh, so we will uh cheer him on as he transitions with the Spartans uh into the spring affected by COVID season. Uh, but thanks to everyone. Uh, you you're watching uh Sports Talk seven five seven with your host, Claudio Clark here. Aaron, uh, you know, good afternoon to you, our participants, you know, please stay safe and uh we thank you.
Thank you.